Good evening and welcome to the Nashua North Boardroom. I'm going to call the Finance and Operations Committee to order. It is Tuesday, June 18th. In attendance tonight, we have Ms. Daniels Williams, myself, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Rodriguez, and Ms... You're not on the list. Okay. Could you spell it?
Yes.
Ms. DeGray. All right. Mr. Donovan, I'm going to turn it over to you. It looks like we have maybe six items to recommend, motions to recommend tonight. Six or seven?
Yes. All right. We're going to start off with information technology. And we have Mr. Rodriguez here to speak about the first item, which is the purchase of Chromebooks.
Good evening. Just for correction, it's not for middle school. It's for the general Chromebook purchase for the district. So I think when this was submitted a little bit ago, it was for McCarthy, but that was taken care of through GSSBC. But this is a separate thing. So we're purchasing 1,000 Chromebooks. The IT department recommends we purchase 1,000 Chromebooks from IT insiders at the price of $288,000, $38,000. And this was from a local firm in Nashua. And so just because they had the lowest price, we had the best relationship with them. So we're going to recommend IT insiders for purchase of Chromebooks.
And just because now that we've got one-to-one with middle school and high school, I think the plan going forward will be to give each sixth grader a Chromebook that they'll keep for sixth, seventh, and eighth, and they'll pass that in, and then they'll get another one, and they'll keep that nine through 12, and then pass that in.
Yeah, we recently implemented that this year. So 9, 10, 11, 12, or 9, 10, 11 right now has their Chromebooks. The incoming freshman will have a Chromebook, but 12 gave theirs back. So I'm still working through the numbers of what came back that was still good and damaged and what needs repair. So we just, school just ended last Friday. So this is a process that's going to take us a few weeks to a month to get a head around what we're looking for for numbers for the fall.
Because going forward, the Chromebooks, think of it sort of like a textbook, right? In that they're not going to last seven or eight years. So after we do this for a few years, we'll figure out how long they last. We'll know how many students we have, how many we need, and then we'll put in a, there'll be an annual submission each year in the budget for Chromebooks to keep this process going. That's, you know, assuming that administration wants to continue the process, which at this point, I would think they would.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
I guess my question is, these are now not going to McCarthy because we've already bought 1,000 for McCarthy.
Correct.
So are these needed?
Absolutely. Yeah. So every, so the beginning, the freshman class and the incoming sixth grade class for the middle and high school is quite large. So it's about 2,000-ish students is what we're seeing. It's about 1,600? Right, 1,600. So, but we had to include 20% buffer into those for damages and lost devices. So just so we have them on hand. So it's kind of like 100, it's a 1.2 to 1, if you really think about the Chromebooks that we do have, to student population. So we do have to buy over the actual student population just because we do see a lot of damages and lost devices throughout the school year.
Absolutely. I was wondering if it was something, it would be nice to replace them, but if it was something that we could wait on, being mindful of the budget?
So these aren't nice to replace. These are what we have in stock and what we see every year. So we do have to replace devices every year. And this is being mindful of the budget. So we do have, we do have a replacement for these devices because a large portion of these devices were purchased during COVID. And that's going on four years ago. And the device life, because they're not as durable as regular laptop computers, is about four to five years. They do damage a little bit easier than a regular computer. The most of the damages are the keyboards and broken screens. So, and it's coming to a point where the models that we have now, it's, how much are we actually going to put into them? Because to replace a keyboard or a screen in those devices is almost half the value of it now, or a little bit over. So these are going to go in part of what we're trying to do to have it like a good refresh cycle. And as Mr. Donovan alluded to earlier, so we're going to, it's, this is part of a longer-term plan, you know, as we refresh and replace our technology going forward. So, yeah. We do, this is a yearly purchase that we've had with our Chromebooks. It's right around 1,000 is what we buy per year. COVID is a little bit more because we get government funds as part of this. So...
It's 2,000.
This is 2,000. So as part of JSSBC, yeah, yeah. So it's 2,000 Chromebooks this year is what we're getting. And again, that's going to be, it's part of the new Chromebooks going into the middle school, especially at McCarthy, and then the rest for the high school and the other two middle schools. But out of all, we are taking Chromebooks and figuring out, you know, what needs to go where, where are we short in some buildings, and then reallocating devices as we go.
Thank you, thank you for your answer.
Yep.
No further questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a purchase of 1,000 Chromebooks from the IT insiders in an amount not to exceed $238,000. Funding to come from account 91.1.9122571221. Okay. So motion was made by me, Ms. Daniels Williams. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have a central office upgrade.
Couple of years ago, we put a screen, sort of a TV screen in the superintendent's conference room, if you've been in there. It hooks up through the IT system. You can hook your computer up to it. You can bring up your spreadsheet or your Word document, whatever, and it can be a real helpful working area if you're having a meeting. It can also work if you're having a conference call with multiple people at another site. It's become so popular that we're now planning on putting another one in central office. It'll be in the larger conference room, which is sort of straight behind the main desk there. And we recently took out the sink. There was a sink and some cabinets. We took that out, we flattened the wall, and now we're going to put this screen there and have it hooked up. We've been attempting to do this for over a year, but it took a little while to get the sink out and get everything straightened out with Plan Ops. We've done that now. And I think it'll be very helpful for the whole district. It'll be in central office, but we have lots of meetings there for various groups that come in. And the money for this is actually funds that we got when we signed up for a picture bid about three years ago. They gave us a signing bonus. So we took, some of the signing bonus was shared with the schools. They also receive, based on the number of pictures they sell, they also receive money each year. But there was another piece of the signing bonus that was given to us, and we put it in this fund, and we're going to use that to purchase this item. So it's really no cost to the district or the taxpayer. It's these extra funds. So we went out working with IT, Sue Willborg and Mr. Rodriguez. We got two quotes. There's really two providers of these systems, ProAV and CCS. They're the same people that do the bids when we get work done here. ProAV came in $11,395, CCS at $20,233. Really wasn't too much of a decision based on those quotes. Pretty much giving the same things, slightly different manufacturers, vendors of the equipment. But, so we'd like to, we'd like to move forward with the one from ProAV for $11,395.
Questions? No, I just was thinking, years ago, when I was a teacher, we met with the curriculum committee at central office. And I don't know if it was televised, but it was just a regular committee meeting. I was wondering, in the future, would there be, is there any chance any committee meetings, board meetings, committee meetings would be held there? I'm going back probably...
Yeah, no, when I first started, we had a lot of committee meetings in that room. But I think now it's, I don't see that changing back to that with the equipment that's here. Because this would allow, I don't think this has recording capabilities. Yes.
Okay. No further questions? I'd like to move that we recommend approval of the purchase of an audio/video display for the central office conference room at a cost of $11,395.50 from ProAV Systems,
I'd second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Motion carries.
And then we have a couple of items. I'll turn over to Mr. Rodriguez, one for core switches and one for a firewall.
Okay. So just to give you a little background for the E-Rate process. So schools and libraries can participate in a program that offers a discount rate for internet-ready devices. So that includes our switches, our access points, which give us wireless, and also our internet. So we do get a discounted rate as part of this program. It's called E-Rate, and it's through the FCC. But as part of that process, we have to bid out through an RFP to solicit bids from vendors for specific devices that we are looking for to support, you know, our internet and our backbone and stuff. So as part of this process, we look to see what we need, and then we submit those projects. And as a district in our size and our need, we are allocated a certain amount of funds every five years. So as part of this process, this cycle around, we are completing our final phase of our networking upgrades, which took about four years. And we are at the point where we're upgrading our last five core switches, Main Dunstables, Charlotte Ave, Birch Hill, New Surles, and Dr. Crisp. We received two bids, one from Inter Systems and one from CDW/G, which is government, totaling, and I think this is also kind of a no-brainer, which is like the way we saw with CCS and ProAV, $52,381.55 compared to CDW. The reason why there's such a big discrepancy in the pricing is because they bid us out at the biggest core switches you could possibly get, but they were also a different model. So I think they read the bid as, there are different sizes, of course, which is that you need at these specific, these smaller buildings, you don't need such a big core switch like the ones we have for the district. So I can see why they bitted out such a high price, but it's not what we needed for that. So this is why I recommend we go Inter Systems for this project and implementation. This will take place over the summer, usually after July 1st, when we purchase. So they go in late July, early August at five locations.
Questions?
How come all schools aren't included on that?
So we already upgraded through the, so this is the third year of this particular switch project. So North and South have had their core switches completed as part of the construction projects at Penachuk and Fairgrounds. Those have also been completed through JSSBC money. And we did Penachuk last year with this bid out. And then the, there were five other, six other elementary schools that we did last year as well. So this is the second year of upgrading the core switches per building.
So how long to the project is complete then? Because that's, doesn't seem like it's all those schools. I don't know yet.
Yeah, so this is the final phase. So we, so as part of this phase, we upgraded all of our fiber switching, our fiber connections between the schools, upgraded our fiber panels, our switches, our core switches, all our other switches, our access points. So mostly everything that we see in our internet backbone and interconnecting this throughout the district is complete. So this is the final stage of that. So final phase, I should say. So this is the fourth phase of the project. So this is it for a few years until we had to start upgrading our network devices again. But we couldn't, we can't do it all in big chunks. Because that would have cost a few million dollars. And I don't think he'd like that too much. So we've had some help during COVID. So COVID actually was, you know, as harmful as it was, it did help us out a lot because we were able to get some money that was, that really was, initiated these projects. So one of the first things we did, like I said, was we upgraded the fiber. The fiber between schools was 25 years old. So those connections go dead after a while. And, you know, we were really strategic, working with outside vendors and including the network administrator for the district, Steve Wanty, who's extremely valuable to this district and very smart of what we needed. So this, he informs us, he informs me of what we need, and then we go, and then we discuss what we need and then how we're going to, you know, do these plans going forward. And this is, this is our last phase for this project and the whole network infrastructure upgrade.
I move that we recommend approval of the purchase of upgrades to five core switches to the district's networking infrastructure from Inter Systems, Inc., in an amount not, in an amount, I think this is a typo. Should say in an amount not to exceed. I'm reading the verbatim here. We don't want to exceed.
We don't.
So can I change that right on the? So in an amount not to exceed $52,381.55 fiscal year 2025, account 91.1.99225, excuse me, 2225, 53628. All right. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
All right. And my last item is the firewalls. This is another E-Rate project, just because the internet does go through our firewall. The firewall we're seeking to replace is, right now is our Cisco Firepower. And we're looking to upgrade it with a Fortinet next-generation firewall, which uses AI. I use that term loosely, but it uses behavior-based technology, which it gathers a baseline of what our network should be, and it learns it over the course of a week to two weeks. And then it starts acting as, so if something's out of our baseline of what network activity should be, it thwarts those activities. So it's a pretty slick system. It's one of the better firewalls out there. And this also falls into the E-Rate category. So there is a discount associated with this project right here. So Inter Systems was the only vendor who bid on this. So it is recommended that we go with Inter Systems with a bid of $149,988.67.
No questions for me? I just, do they have any kind of insurance? If there's, if it's compromised, if there's hacking?
So we don't have insurance as, you're talking about like what we experienced from last, so no, we aren't insured. We are, we go through the risk through the city. So I actually got clarification from this. We could purchase a policy, but that's actually, it would actually be through the city and the city IT. We'd have to work with that. Other, other school districts that aren't our side, just because we're city-dependent, right? Yeah. Yeah, we're dependent, yeah. So they actually are insured through Primax. Manchester and Nashua since are given our side are the only school districts in the state that aren't insured through Primax. So if there was an incident, they would cover the cost of that. But are, given our size and our financial situation, we aren't. So...
So Inter Systems doesn't, is it typical for companies in this industry to kind of let other people deal with the liability?
So Inter Systems, considering Inter Systems like a Walmart, they're a reseller. So they, it's not the product. Yeah, Fortinet is the one. So a lot of good IT security and good just business practices is building a culture around that. Because most security breaches happen is human factor. It's not, it's not, you know, really complicated software that's used. It's actually, you know, regular people like us. So that's, I think, we're trying to really build that culture. And we've put in some good software and some good safeguard in there and even implementing new policies. So we're trying to really move our forward, with more than just like software and hardware. So there's a little bit more of that involved.
So I have a follow-up question. So because we're dependent on the city for our insurance, our protection on all that, with this AI portion of all this, does that correspond with everything? Have we checked out that? Because sometimes AI does not allow for other brokers to enter. I don't know. We just had this class for my job, for internet security or whatever. Everything stands alone. You're the expert. So what I'm just saying is, there's something that's actually going to jive with the system that's already there? And be independent enough to stay independent? And why?
So I think you're referring to is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is defense in depth. So if, this isn't our only failsafe of what we're using. So we have a firewall. We have endpoint protection through another machine learning, machine learning or AI type of antivirus. So that protects our computers, our servers. And then we're also exploring, it's called the Network Detection Response System, which is like a module that's built into the Fortinet systems that we're getting right now. So we have multiple layers that we're using. We also use multi-factor authentication, which when you sign in outside of the district and certain people within the district, you have to confirm that it's actually you. So that's through either a code, a push that says approve this sign-in, or a telephone call or whatever that comes to your desk. So we do have standalone systems, but they do support each other. They are woven together. So we make sure that our layers of security are in place. But we are, we do try our best to work within the budget that we have. And thankful for the E-Rate project, the E-Rate process, because we can actually afford more in the long run because we are getting a discount rate. And the firewall is part of the E-Rate portion. So because this is 149,000, and the eventual discount rate will be 65% of that, it may allow us to buy something more to actually enhance our security posture, you know, for the district and to protect the students and the staff.
No further questions? Okay. I move that we recommend approval of the purchase of upgrade, excuse me, that was the last one. I recommend approval of the purchase of an upgraded firewall from Inter Systems, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $149,988.67 fiscal year 2025, All right. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, we have three special education contracts. The first two, I'll speak to a little bit, Clark Associates and ABC. Clark Associates, we have been working with for a number of years. They provide our occupational therapy services for our special education students. And ABC provides our physical therapy services for our special education students. We've worked with these firms for a number of years. A lot of the employees, people think actually work for us because they've been working for these two firms for a long time. What these firms bring to the table, they hire the people, they train them, they bring them in. They, they also offer, they can offer more flexibility in salaries and more flexibility in days. So for example, if you're a physical therapist or an occupational therapist, you want to work three days a week, but you want to work in a school, you can work through these agencies for us. As opposed to if you were going to try to work for us, if we're going to have these positions in the district, we would probably try to get full-time people. So we've had this relationship since I've been here. It's worked well. Every time I speak to the special education director, I say, "Do you want to change this?" And they say, "No, we really like these people. We have a good relationship." So each year, around this time, we negotiate with them. They request a certain price. I suggest another price. We come up, both of these are about a 4% increase, which is basically what our budget increases. So I think, I think it's, Special Education Department wants to continue to work with these people. And so I negotiated with them, agreed, and these are the, we have these, these are the amounts. The first one is for $937,000 from Clark Associates, and the second is with ABC for $237,000. And those amounts are both in the budget under contracted services under special ed.
Questions?
So this is the renewal of the contract. It has already been accepted by who it needs to be accepted, and we're just taking care of the financial portion?
No. Well, I mean, the contract itself, the language in the contract really hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is the pricing.
But renewal from one year to the...
Yeah, it's an annual contract. So each year, at the end of, it just ended for this school year, and then it'll start for next school year.
So if we don't approve this budget item, they don't get special education for next year? Or we would find it within our district?
Well, we don't, we don't have OT and PT people within our district. So if we didn't agree to this contract, then we wouldn't be able to provide those services. We'd have to find somewhere else to get them. And most of these services are written into students' IEPs.
No further questions? I move that we recommend approval of the occupational therapy and physical therapy contracts from Clark Associates, $937,305 in ABC Physical Therapy, $237,000, using FY25 budgeted funds, All right. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Okay. And the next one is our contract with Clearway, our alternative high school in the city of Nashua. So you're probably aware of the program. It's over near Dr. Crisp. We've worked with, the Adult Learning Center is the owner of the program, so to speak. This program is for students that have a hard time in our large high schools. They go to this school. They have a shorter day, a little more smaller classes, so to speak. They have the base, you'll get a base diploma. You know, they don't have high-level courses and other things, but it'll get you through your high school. But it it'll get you through your high school career. We've been doing it for many years. The the contract reads it's for up to 65 65 spots for regular students and 10 spots for special education students. The history has shown us that we don't really fill up all the slots. But the way the Adult Learning Center looks at this is they said, we need so much money to run this program. Over the years, people say, well, if we reduce the slots, can we reduce the cost of the program to the Nashua School District? They are heavily dependent, if not fully dependent, on the Nashua School District to run this program. We have the last couple of years suggested that they try to bring in students from other districts so that they could help fund this program. They haven't been too successful in that. I think they're pretty much, it's it's sort of become this dependency on the Nashua School District. So personally, I think that's not the way it should be. But it's a program that it works for certain students. And I think for the most part, superintendent, the assistant superintendents, the high school principals, the guidance counselors, these are the people that deal with Clearway mostly. They would like to continue the program for another year where where we've negotiated the same rate as last year. Hopefully, they can, most out of district schools have kids from all kinds of towns. This school has kids just from Nashua. So it's 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 almost like a branch of the Nashua School District, but it really isn't. It's a private school. So it's clunky in that way. On the other hand, it's been around a long time. It's good for certain students. Certain parents find it useful for their students. It works for those students. So thus, we continue to to move forward on it each year.
Ms. Daniel Williams, any other questions? No further, I don't need to ask now. So I move that I move recommendation to approve the occup, gosh, sorry. I recommend I recommend approval, I move that we recommend approval of the contract with the Adult Learning Center, Clearway High School for 624,000 dollars with FY25 budgeted funds. Accounts 91.1.02126755694. And in the amount of 312,000 dollars, account 91.1 In the amount of 312,000.
And motion?
Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes.
Okay, the next item is food service equipment. So our food service program, we have a surplus in our program at this point in time. The federal government says you should keep no more than three years of your, three years, sorry, three months of your average expenditures in your in your fund. We have more than that now. That was created during the year when we had free lunch for all. And we had a small amount of staff members, so our costs were lower. All the all the students that wanted took the food, so we sold a lot of meals, so our revenue increased. Our costs weren't that high because we didn't have staff. And there was also some free food back in in that time. It was, you know, the sort of the end of COVID, so to speak. So we built up a large balance. We've been trying to spend that down over the last couple of years, and this is another step in that direction. On Monday, we'll, there's a contract coming forward for the full board for the for that union group. And I'll speak to that. I'll speak to that then. But this is for, since they're renovating Birch Hill and Maine Dunstable schools, it's adding a piece of equipment at each one that they don't currently have. And then it's replacing a range, a cooking range that's broken at Dunstable. So quotes were received from three different vendors and the vendor singer, Kittredge Singer, or Singer Kittredge, actually, came in with the lowest quotes. So we would like those approved so that we can prove the equipment at those two schools.
Could you find out before this goes to the full board whether there's going to be possible expenses for venting or shields or ducts? Because if I was just thinking, if it's new equipment, is the, I don't know if the word is infrastructure, but the hardware that's needed to ventilate this equipment, do you think?
That's being done as part of the renovation.
So that's also, so this equipment is compatible with those renovations?
Exactly.
And I knew you hinted at that. Great, that's my other question. So I move that we recommend approval of the purchase of a range and steamer at Maine Dunstable and a steamer at Birch Hill for a total of 31,439.15 cents. Funding to come from the food food service SRF account 91.2100.99256071800. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Time to eat. I'd
Okay, next, next item is the quarterly credit card update. It's the first three slash four months of the year. We do this just to ensure that there's someone else is looking at the credit card usage and some, we've had over the over the years, a few issues in the state of New Hampshire where employees of school districts have spent a bit liberally with the credit cards. So this policy was put in place a few years back. But just running through this quickly, you can see it's mostly used for travel and conferences and and supplies that we get online that we can't find locally. Just to highlight the the three items, in March, you can see there was a travel 19,000 dollars. What that was, was the DECA high school clubs, which they ended up paying us back. But we had to put it on the credit card for them to get their flights. I believe there were close to 60 students from south and about 10 from north. And they flew out to, I believe it was California, where they went to their contest slash convention, spent a few days and then came back. So it got charged to the card, but then reimbursed from the student activity funds. In January, there's an item relocation, 664. That's really boxes for the Birch Hill and Maine Dunstable teachers to pack and move from one classroom to another. So that's probably not a truly accurate account relocation. It could have gone to supplies, but. And then the technology software, the 1,015, that's for a mapping software that, as we, Mr. Jonathan Foster, who we call Johnny Data, he is using that to work on the various, he used it for the middle school. Redistricting. And and he's going to, as we look at the elementary schools, he'll also use that. So we have something internal. It's 1,000 bucks a year, but it's a lot cheaper than hiring somebody. And he's pretty good at this. So as long as we keep Johnny around, we should be all set. So that's that. I don't know if you have any other questions on that, but. All right, two items left. As far as the financial report, we're going to go through the forecast, and that will cover for the financial report. That is your nice, large spreadsheet, the highlight of my year. Okay, so if you flip over on the back page quickly and look down at at the bottom in the box, you will notice the top of the box is there's going to be, I'm estimating, an excess of over 5 million dollars. Though most of that is FICA, pension and benefits. Those are all the items that the city puts into our budget. So as I've said before, if we overrun that, they've got to come up with the difference. If we underrun it, we don't get to spend that money. It goes back into the city funds. So when you subtract those out from what I'm estimating, it shows we're going to have about 198,000 left at the end of the year. That's pretty good. In March, when I first did this, my estimate was 285,000. In April, it went down to 111, and now it's up to 198. But all in all, it's fairly close, right? So so far, no big surprises. Most of the costs are in for the year. We still have, there's some payroll costs. So flip back to the top pa, the first page, and we'll just, I'll just highlight a few areas. So where most of our expenses are are in salaries and wages. When you, when you look at the column, there's, you can see the months go across the top, July through June. And then there's that summer escrow number. And then when you slide over a couple more, you'll see what's remaining. So if we look at salaries and wages for the whole group, total amount of budget that was, that's available in there is almost 95 million, 94.9 million. And I'm projecting there'll be about a million left at the end of the year. So we're going to need some of that in other areas. But what's under the summer escrow, the 9.5 million? Teachers get paid through the summer, but that cost is for this school year, not next school year. They get their first pay in September, and then they get paid through the summer if they choose that option. So that those payments we have to bring back into this year because they did. They've already earned that money. We're just paying them out over time. Neil could tell you, a lot of teachers aren't very good at budgeting. This would never happen to a bunch of accountants. They'd say, give me the money now. I don't have to wait two months to get it. So that includes that, and it also includes the lump sum payment. So some some teachers get 22 pays, and then the last pay of the school year, which is Wednesday, I mean, Thursday of this week, they'll get all four checks together. So they're all included in that number. That's why that number in summer escrow is so high. So can I run a separate spreadsheet on this? And I compare it to the city thing. Since it's the largest item, it's the thing you have to have the best handle on. So I think I think we're going to be fineish. Benefits, as I talked, most of those get pulled out. We will have some money left in educational assistance. It won't all be used. So that'll be available. The next group of items, professional and technical services. So if you look in that summer escrow column, you'll see there's 16,000 under the accounting and auditing. We have not yet had the student activity fund audit. Needs to be done. So we'll probably have to do a purchase order. That that isn't even scheduled yet, but it will be. But that's a cost that that work just didn't get done. So we're probably behind by about four months at this point. The other item, medical services, I put in 17,000. Every third grader, I think it is, we test their eyes. And we've been, we've been using outside optometrists, and we pay them a certain fee. They've been harder and harder to come by lately. They're not, they haven't been wanting to get involved anymore. So we've worked with the nurses, and we're going to buy some sort of a eye testing piece of equipment. There's, we're going to buy two of them that cost about 8,000 dollars each. And then we don't have to worry about the doctors and contracts with them going forward. So I think it's, we've got the money. We didn't have it in the original budget. I figured, let's put it in now. These things will last for years, and in the long run, we'll save money. So that's, that's what that item is. You'll want to purchase order for those soon. And then when you look at the bottom line there, the contracted services, that's where you have the big, the bigger negative number. That's what I've been talking about most of the year. We can't, we haven't been able to get all the special education teacher specialists. We just haven't. So we've had to use outside services, contracted services, to provide those services for our students. It costs three to three and a half times more than it would adjust their salary. So in the in the budget for next year, there's a 1.5 million dollar number in contracted service. So I'm projecting we're going to get some of those teachers. We're not going to get all of them. They're really, really hard to find. So maybe there can be some discussions during the teacher's contract, which will take place next year, or maybe a different way to deal with that, but we won't get into that now. At this point, I've spoken to the special ed business manager. She gave me her estimate. And this is where we're going to be about three, the total accounts 3.6 million, but about 3 million of that is just the special ed. So what I've, so you can see that group as a whole is a minus 335. So what I will do is I'll transfer some of the excess payroll down to the contracted services to cover that cost. Okay, the next group is the property.
Can I ask a question now about that item? Or you want to wait till you're done? So the the summer school has the need for those services as well?
Yes. They do. No, but that 400,000 is through June. The summer school costs will show up in next year's budget. I just put it in that line because we don't have all the invoices in yet. Okay, I did an estimate, and then I said, okay, Alessa, how much more do I need?
So that's not for the summer? That's just a carryover that you're expecting?
Yes.
And if you said that, I'm probably, I'm sure you said that.
Okay, next group, property services. Looks like we'll have some extra money in electricity, which should cover any other costs. So that group as a whole should have some excess funds in it, mostly due to the electricity. The heating gas looked like it's going to run a bit over this year because the cost of the gas went up from November through June. We'll be renegotiating that contract in November of of '24, so hopefully that will go down. But the way I look at those, as long as electricity, heating, gas and water net out, then we should be fine. Next, we have other services. At the top is the telephone. We've been running over budget on that. We are putting in another new phone system, as you're probably aware, that's going to save us money. Let's see. I'll come back to meeting in about a year. We'll see if it saved us any money. Okay, and then most of those other accounts is not too much. They're relatively small accounts. Then you get down to the, towards the bottom, the transportation, regular transportation, special ed transportation. Just got updated numbers today on that. Looks like special ed is going to run over a little bit. But the regular transportation will have a little bit extra. So in a net, transportation is going to be about 30,000 dollars over budget. So all in all, okay, most of that reason that it is over budget is for the students going out of district where they're the only student going, and we've got to pay a very high price in in some sort of van to get them back and forth. And then the next item down, tuition out of district. That is going to run way over what we had in budget. For the year, it's going to be 900,000 dollars over budget. We're projecting what to be 6.8 million. The last few years, we were closer to 5.8. But we were above six pre-COVID. COVID came, a bunch of students either left the district or quit going out of district or something. But we used to have about 95 students. We went down to 70 or 75 students. So the number went down. But the cost per student at these schools has skyrocketed in the last few. the last few years. So, um, now the number of students, it's started to climb, so this number's going up. So this number that, we have a good system in place, working with the special education department, we meet with them every couple months, we look at, we have a list of all the students, the cost by month, we have an estimate for the year, so we have a good sense of what it's going to be. We did increase the budget for next year, but if it stays around the 6.8, it might run up, this line item may run over next year, too. But because we have extra funds elsewhere, it'll cover the, why this is higher. And there's also a account that if that ran over and we didn't have money in other accounts, we do have an account we could use to cover for that, that I set up years ago. Okay, the next set of accounts, mostly supplies and maintenance and those sorts of things. We'll have some extra money there, we usually do. I'm showing about 160,000, it might be a little less than that, but it'll, it'll be in that ballpark. The indirect expenses, that's related to our grants. My guess is that, that we're gonna have an extra 17, we may have more than that, but the, when the, the grants are finished being invoiced over the next six weeks or so, that number will tie out, but that's a conservative number. All the computer costs, software.
Can I ask a quick, an ex, well, the extra 17, you mean over? 17,000?
Yeah, but it's a, it's a, it's a negative budget, so it's, think of it as a revenue budget. So it's a mi, we budgeted minus 240, and we're gonna get a minus 257, so the 17's a good thing.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I'm just having trouble understanding why it says 107.4%, which to me says it went over.
Yeah, 'cause it's a negative, if it was.
I understand that, I just, so we're short?
No, we're, we're better off.
Okay, forget it. I've read these before, I just.
Okay, yeah, no, we're, we're, a positive number on that line is a good thing, a negative number would reduce what you have left. This adds to what we have left. Okay, and then the, the, the next, the computer and the furniture and fixtures, most of that is computer equipment, um, and it looks like we're gonna have about 37,000 left in that. Most of that is related to some of the IT things, as you saw tonight. IT has had a couple of, um, let's call them windfalls, this E-rate, um, where they budget a certain amount, and then when the E-rate number comes in, it's lower than we thought. So we have some extra money. So occasionally, I'll allow them to spend that on some other things, but a lot of times, I'll just say, "Hey, we budgeted 100, it only costs you 50, you don't get to keep the whole 50." That comes back to cover maybe other issues. But that should come out pretty close, um, so other than that, that kinda gets us down to where it's about 198. So I'm pretty comfortable, it's not gonna be a big giant number, I don't think it's gonna be a lot lower than that, could be a little bit more. That's, that'll be the estimate. This, I'll true this up in July at the, at the last meeting I'll be at. Solid number by then, yes.
Um, what will we be able to do?
Well, we only have, like, a week. So if we wanted to spend some of this, I have, actually, there's a couple of things Sunset Heights would like in their, for their special ed program. I'm waiting for a quote on that. But if somebody has something they'd really like, maybe we could spend some of that. But it would have to, decision have to be made pretty quick. This wouldn't go very far from Mount Pleasant.
But it would pay for that, that test that we're talking about getting.
Test?
So, um, you know, talked about it in the budget season, I forget what they, um...
Study?
Yes.
Yeah, that was.
That's only 130.
No, that was 350.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, wouldn't do that, um...
I mean, so Sunset, Sunset Heights, I mean, it's still helping a school.
Yes, yeah.
Still helping the special education. You know, I just wanna make sure that, you know.
Yeah, we'll use some of it for that, and then there'll be some extra, but keep in mind, the payroll, those actual costs aren't gonna show up till July and August, so then when I, when they're actually paid out, so I'll know. So I've gotta have enough money to make sure I cover them, I can't, if I spent, let's say 198 was exact, and I spent 205, then I wouldn't have enough money to pay someone at the end of the, the final payroll. So I've gotta be a little bit careful. The way I look at it, if I've got 173 million, million dollar budget, and I come within a couple hundred grand, that's pretty good.
Before you go, 'cause I, you know, I hear you the wizard, so I wanna make sure that you, you know what we need, um, that will be helpful going forward. You know, I'm really sorry that you won't be here after July, you know that. Thank you for compiling all this and everything, but let us, let us know what we can do other than, you know, like, maybe like physically purchasing something. Where can we do, make the greatest good with what's left over? Thank you.
All right.
I just, so the, um, FICA pension benefits, that, that net number of 4.9 whatever, how accurate is that?
That's very accurate, but that money goes back to the state.
I understand, but that number is...
That's pretty accurate.
That's pretty accurate.
So that, yeah, that money will go back. As far as the benefits piece, especially the medical, you know, the, the city's self-insured, so they do an estimate at the beginning of the year. If claims come in very high, they're gonna need some of this money to cover some of those claims. Because what they do is they, they look at it as a whole city, and they say, "Okay, for all the employees, we're assuming the cost of claims this year is going to be, let's say 18 million," I'm just making a number up, but it's a big number. And if it comes in a little higher than that, and they happen to be, let's say, the fire department staff that has some significant issues, then this money will go to help pay for those. Because they take it, they, they break it into the departments based on some, some allocation. But you could have, you know, the way medical is these days, you could have 10 employees, but two or three of them could have significant medical issues, and they could cost a ton more than 500 employees could, so. Makes sense.
Are you, you gonna be at the June 24th full meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, transfer report.
I meant to say 90, 99.89% accuracy, that's pretty, pretty good.
It is good.
Kills me to say it, but, you know, it always kills me to...
I know, you got a little of me in you. Okay, transfer report. Now, we've talked, most of these transfers, we'll go through them pretty quick, are what we call the spend down, right? We give the schools their allocations, they spend their money at the end of the year, they say, "Okay, I've got $1,000 left in supplies, I'm gonna go buy some desks," or whatever they wanna buy. So that's what most of these are, so I'll just run through them quickly. First one, Birch Hill, it's a spend down, they had extra money in supplies, they're gonna buy some, some furniture. The next one is slightly different, it's the 21st Century Extended Day Program. So this is a, a, a special revenue fund that matches up with the grant that we have, and the summer school programming is, used to be done by our staff, now it's done by the Y, the Power Scholar Program. So all they're doing is they're taking those mon, funds out of labor accounts, and they're moving them into transportation and contracted services. So it's, all it's doing is putting them in the right accounts. They should, going forward, they shouldn't have to do this because they should budget it in the first place, in the right place. Next is South, they're moving some extra transportation money into office supplies. And what does South have for transportation? Typically, it's like the band or Rotse or something like that, but a lot of times, they'll budget, and then they may not use that. Main Dunstable is the next one, once again, spend down, supplies and postage, and they're moving it to purchase some desks and chairs. Next one is again, 21st Century. Now, what this is, this is a little, little different. 21st Century Grant allows us to collect tuition from some of the parents. So they collect a certain amount of money, but when the grant ends, so there's, there was a two-school grant that, that was, I think it was a four-year grant, four or five-year grant, it's ending. You have to use all of the tuition funds that you've collected over the five-year period, or you have to give it back to the state. So basically, Janeele, who runs, Janeele Archer runs this program now, she, um, we told her, there's extra, there's tuition funds you haven't spent, so this is what she used 35,000 for, was to buy 150 Chromebooks for the program. Do they need 150? I don't know, but it's better to have some than just turn around and give the money back to the state. That's something that's relatively new, they didn't used to do that. I don't understand why they do that, but hey, that's what you do, that's what you do. Okay, Nashua Athletics, these are, Ms. Jingress, very good about tracking all her costs, that's her spend down. Then Nashua South, that was actually a correction of an entry. Probably put it in backwards the first time. Fairgrounds Elementary School, 3,500 there, that's, um, spend down also. Get to Nashua South, there's Reasons, spend down, the next one's spend down. So they're just, high schools have more money, so they're gonna have more entries. Sunset Heights, uh, moving from their various accounts they didn't spend to buy some furniture. Uh, South, some more, this is 11,000 into 61,100. Office supplies, but, but.
I guess, so there was a lot of excess money that needed to be spent now. And I understand, I'm glad that they're getting, um, some, some are getting desks, and some are getting all that. But how do, how do we better hit that as a target number? How, you know what I mean? So that there's not $11,000 that now we have to spend, or we lose. You know what I mean? Because we're spending this now, well, this says 520, but, so we're spending it at 520, school gets out in four weeks, and then they get a whole new budget come July 1st. So it just doesn't seem right. Like, you know what I mean? Like, it doesn't seem, seem like we're doing the best that we can all year, instead of, "Well, hurry up and let's do this," or "Save it and possibly penny pinch all year," and then not be able to do that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's a good question, why there would be that much left. Like, the high schools get a couple hundred grand each. So the way they're going to budget, we tell them, "Budget carefully, don't spend all your money in the first four months, because then if something happens and you need some money." So they budget conservatively. Though, there's a point where you, you don't wanna be too conservative. Like you said, if I give you 100,000, you don't wanna spend just 50,000 of it for nine out of the 10 months, and then spend the last and the last month. Why not spend more during the year? You know, maybe give more to individual staff members who might need things for their classroom or things like that. So, but we do allow each school to do it. Some schools are better at it than others. Uh, South had it in the middle of the year, lost their, uh, um, financial secretary, and a new person took over. So that's probably why this happened. This is more than you'll typically see. You'll notice North, it isn't anywhere as big because that secretary's been there for a few years. North has had a person there for a long time, she left, and then I think we've had three people in the last four years. So you need the principal working with that person to make this effective. So that's why you're seeing more from South this year.
And the, I just looked at the two big, so it looks like the two biggest items that they didn't spend money on were printing, posters, and delivery. So it could be that the administration over there is thinking about ways to save, so that, you know, for the 11,000, it could be they bought a new printer, or, you know, maybe they did a lot more email rather than direct mail. But I think if, it could be they're replacing one mode of communication with a nut, with maybe a copier or a fax machine or something, just, but...
No, they're definitely doing that. I think postage is something that's gone way down, um, because we don't really communicate through US Mail very much, right? Though, when they set their budget up originally, back in December or January, they look at what they budgeted last year, and they budget the same amount for postage. That's, if it's a new person, they'll say, "Oh, how do we do this? We budgeted 5,000 for postage, I'll do that again." Then they'll realize after a while, "Oh, wait a minute, we're not using postage that much, we're only spending 2,000 on postage." Spend it this way. So that, it's, it's a, until you have someone, uh, the financial secretary that's worked there for a couple of years, you're gonna see more of this. All right, the Assistant Superintendent's Office, um, so this was the curriculum, they had, uh, extra money in testing materials, and they're using it for supplies. So these supplies will pretty much be used next year, but they're, they'll have them at the beginning of the year, if we look at it that way. Nashua High School North, just spoke, see, their numbers are a lot lower, that's their end of the year. Nashua Technology Center, that's sort of the CTE program. They moved their items from sort of services and travel and things like that into, into miscellaneous supplies. They have so, different kinds of supplies, you know, wood and pipes and things that cost, that went way up in price, so they have to be very careful the way they spend. Dr. Crisp, they transferred their year-end money to buy some furniture and a projector. High School North, there's another small one, end of the year. High School North, another small one. End of year spending. Okay, the next one, legal services. So we had to, we ran, overran the legal service line, uh, that happens, it's hard to control. But it ran over, so we had to take money from the, uh, we took it from the educational assistance line to cover the spend on that line. And technology, this is, they took some money, they had some extra money in the contracted services, and they're moving it into buy parts and supplies to fix the Chromebooks and the computers that they do every summer when people pass them in. Brentwood Academy, which is over at Franklin Street, they had some extra funds in their supplies, and they're, um, purchasing some office furniture and enrichment programs. Assistant Superintendent's Office, that's curriculum, they're moving money to cover a conference. Miscellaneous, okay, this was just the district office, this is central office, moving it from equipment to supplies. Nashua North, another small one. Brand. Special education, okay, so here's, talked about that in the 500,000, we have extra in labor, bringing it down to contracted services. This is the second one, so I've already, this is, I've moved a million dollars so far from labor down to cover the contracted service, and I probably have to do another one, which I'll do in the next few days. Okay, Assistant Superintendent's Office, uh, end of the year spends, buy some books and supplies. Mount Pleasant, end of the year spends, name for Amherst, buying some furniture and desks. You notice, most of the stuff they buy, they take it from supplies to buy... You notice, most of the stuff they buy, they take it from supplies to buy desks and things. Elm Street Middle School, last time you'll see an Elm Street entry. We'll have McCarthy Middle School. That's their spend down. There's two of them. And Nashua Athletics, one more, another small one for Elm Street, buy a software program. And last but not least, Sunset Heights. Purchase paper.
Are these in the date, or the, do you, are these in chronological order? These are when they were received, so.
Yes.
Oh, that, this is from May though.
These are all, all done in May, but most of the transfer entries are in May. There'll be a few in June. Then, in, in like July and August and September, there's hardly any transfers, cause you're working with a brand-new budget. This is the end of the year, where you see a lot of these. All right, so since they have an entry over 5,000, you have to approve them.
I move that we recommend approval of the FY '24 May transfer report.
Second that motion.
Motion's on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to? I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. At 7:13.